Just one. Pretty giant thing.
We have roll call when you're ready. Frank. Hanson. Healy. Clemish. Michael. Schultz. Williams. Healy. Hart. Is Donna online? We need to have an addition to the minutes for a plat. The agenda. To the agenda. Add it to the agenda, so. Let's turn the minutes from the previous meeting.
All Henry approval of the minute.
Second, all those in favor? I. Any opposed? Motion carried. Now, do we have any other items to be added to the agenda other than this plat? For last addition?
Move through all the amended agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? I. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Do you have any conflict of interest declarations to declare? From any of the members of board?
No.
No? So first item on the agenda here is gin and care mager for a conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a swimming pool in a moderate density residential district. Said properties legally described as the north 300 feet. Of the south 333 feet. Of the east 196 feet. Of the west 656 feet. Of southeast quarter of the northeast quarter in section seven. T93 north range 56 west of the 5th PM in Yankton County. South Dakota. Less highways and roads here and after referred to as Turkey Valley Township, Yankton, State of South Dakota. E911 address is 213 Firefly Drive, Yankton, South Dakota. Okay, we have someone here to speak on this CUP. Hey Kara Moger. Heather John.
Your name? Yeah, we have, uh, we're by obviously for a swimming pool. It's semi underground, semi above ground. At our house, and it's 24 feet.
Do you have any kind of fence surrounded or fencing yard where it's okay?
We don't have a fencing yard, we do have a fence, a few like that. Half the pool, and then the other half we're gonna have a deck.
And again, that's why I'm just asking. So, you know, people are usually sure it's that. That's why we asked you.
A pool or a pond. As far as where? Yeah, I think that used to be. Oh, I think up at the neighbor's down there. Yeah. Yeah, he used to be that. Okay. I thought you were going to bring your little. No. I guess I missed the point exactly of the location where. I think you said their backside of the house? Yeah, it's on the backside of the house, it's the south side of the house. Pretty much centered on the house.
And we did have a letter from the lake from one neighbor, and it is just regarding the fact that there's a lot of local kids in the neighborhood. So they wanted to. So, um, other than that, have you had any more input on this theory? Jessica, have you heard of any other letters?
I, there's one in the packet. Yeah, we've had, we've had a couple of neighbors call and told them to submit a letter to us if they were more against it. We haven't reviewed anything. With that one.
And it was just an inquiry, it wasn't saying that they don't want you to.
Yeah, and the same with the people called, but just concerned about that.
Do you have any other questions?
There are two foot fences in red eyes, is it?
Well, the pool's actually like two feet out of the ground, so I've seen that. So it'd be basically four feet off the ground.
The fence is on.
The fence is connected to the pool.
So it's really.
Well, it's just for your own protection, you know? Kids will wander around. I can just see somebody going across that fence.
Yeah, because it's in your area. Yeah, it's about four and a half feet off the ground of the fence, and then to get in the pool, you have to go up three steps on the deck, which also.
Up you.
My neighbors like to complain about the looks of the six foot fence. So, so the neighbors might complain about how a six foot fence looks around the pool.
Well, safety.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this proposal?
Can you guys out in the hallway hear us?
Yes. Yeah, we're good. Alright, so hearing none, um, the time for public input on this particular item is now closed. That doesn't mean you have to leave, it just means that you have your chance. Okay, any more discussion from the board?
I guess I'm, I'm glad they're gonna have a four foot fence around that, I think that'll be the. And then John, your, your gate, are you gonna have a lock on that or something then? Okay, so you're gonna have a, it's a four to four and a half foot fence, and then you're gonna have a gate, and then that's also gonna be locked correctly. Thank you.
So the safety.
Move approval of the CUP application. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve, roll call vote.
Are we gonna, are we gonna add any of that, any of the fences along? That's not a.
Yes.
I, I guess he's gonna do it anyway, and I guess, uh, to alleviate the, the comments we got, uh. You know, I didn't make that as a condition.
Even I wasn't even gonna put it as a condition, I guess. One, one quick question before we both go off. And the building permit application says class four, describes the effects of being a.
Uh, building permit is for the deck around it there, I got that approved, I included that so you could see the setbacks of what the deck is, and that would be an idea of the setbacks of the pool.
So we'll put that in the findings of fact, this one is putting forward for the handful of them who are. A lot of getting for safety reasons. Then a roll call vote for approval of this group as we read. Healy?
Yeah.
Clemish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Okay, Connor, well, Aaron. I apologize if I mispronounced your name, variance in class. Applicant is requesting a variance of minimum lot requirement to the variance of minimum block width in agricultural district. Existing lot is 2.64 plus or minus acres, and the proposed lot increases the lot size to 3.41 plus or minus acres. And increases the width to 270 feet. Said property is legally described as proposed lot one. A red cedar subdivision lying in the east half of the southwest corner of section 32. T96 north range 54 west of the 5th PM, Yankton County. South Dakota. Here and after referred to as Turkey Valley Township, Yankton, State of South Dakota. The E911 address is 44726 South Dakota Highway 46, Irene, South Dakota. Is there someone here to speak? Open on up, and then please state your name and reference.
Hello, my name is Connor Blair.
Alright, Connor, so you're making a lot more in compliance than a non-compliant. Of, uh, an existing lot. A non-compliant.
Uh, my. Correct, never went wrong, but this, uh, was Mr. Brian, that started the property, that's everybody from. And from, uh, if you remember, it was two months ago he addressed us, and he had this, I believe this lot was created prior to zone. And it was his father-in-law's property, and so, uh. He got more land from his father-in-law, but had never added it to the plat. And then sold it to you, is that correct? Just to give a little bit of background story. Basically, what this is doing is adding, killing the inches of plot itself, this is off the line.
And so now it's impacting those trees that we see in the yard?
That's correct, we got a north, uh, little tree line there, inside outside of the yard.
And I'll take the trees on the east side as well?
That's correct.
Does anybody have any other questions for him? Thank you, Connor, I just have to ask for a question. Alright, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this agenda item for the variance for increase of the lot size? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for additional discussion from the board.
You know, I feel that, that this lot, that, um, from what I understand, predated zoning, and, uh. It is going from less compliant to more compliant because we're adding a burden to it, so. I really don't, I, I think this is one of those times where it's good, I mean, you certainly wanna have your own utilities and the trees in a. One area as opposed to two separate plots. But the key being that it's coming more into compliance than rather than. I guess I was, uh, most nobody has, has announced I'd make a motion to approve the Connor and Henry variance, um, from 2.64 acres to. 3.41 acres, um, based on the fact that it's coming more into compliance, and the new. Plat will encompass the trees and utilities to the property.
And it's also increasing.
Yes.
Right, we have a motion to approve, we have a second. Healy?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Uh, I'd make a motion to approve the plat.
Clemish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
We have a conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an open sales area and a repair shop. More than eight for motor vehicles and equipment. Said property is legally described as the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter in section 31. T96 north range 54 west, Yankton County, South Dakota. Less highways and roads here and after referred to as Turkey Valley Township, Yankton, State of South Dakota. The E911 address is 44650 South Dakota Highway 46, Irene, South Dakota. We have someone here to speak on this permit. This permit request.
I'm Wally Bocky.
Bocky, I'm sorry. So, Wally, tell us what you're planning to do.
I'm applying for a used vehicle license in the state of South Dakota. And they made me own my property, make sure neighbors wouldn't oppose the used car lot or. Or sale on the road. We, I've already got my bond and my liability insurance, this is one of the steps they require.
It's technically, because of the motor vehicle permit, that you need to have the conditional use.
Yeah.
You gotta, you're repairing and selling stuff that.
Yeah.
Stand or sell. Automatic license. Vehicle. Where, where are you gonna be working? On that flat lot or west of my driveway next to the road?
Yeah.
Well, you got some nice presentation.
Yeah. First state to make you keep your lot clean, and then I got it, and I'll maybe.
Wally, do you have any, um, knowledge or points they're going to do on high reports?
Uh, they're gonna raise, in front of my road, they're gonna raise that five feet there.
There's a lot of blind spot coming from the east.
Right, yeah, they're gonna get rid of that. Yes, they're gonna raise the driveway five foot, I don't know how far they're gonna drop that hill, but. They'll improve it quite a bit. At one time, one state let me put a driveway and clear to the blast, and come in all the trucks, and they're gonna try to do that, so. As it is now, but they'll, they'll improve, but it'll, it'll down the road, so.
Are you gonna have any, uh, lighting or anything there?
No.
Something like that? In that, that side went down.
Yeah, it was one of the Alex trucks, and he flipped all time. And down the road, they're gonna make that forty foot drive, not, they're gonna improve the driveway too.
Are you gonna, are you building a new repair shop?
No, it'd be on just the one I got. Or, I got an office in there already.
Are you gonna have a lot of old cars or parts or anything?
Just, my, my, uh, my plan is to have like some rebuilders. Things, you know, basically what I meant, no, no salvage, no.
Well, that's right.
Yeah, no salvage.
I mean, I'm gonna change the lot for what I got today, except maybe some auto fields, because of the equipment.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this neighborhood has a lot of old money, which was here before you, so, uh, just right down the road.
Do you have any other questions for Wally? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this proposed CUP? Hearing none, time for public input is now closed. I would entertain a motion or a discussion from the board. But we have an existing business who has an option to expand it to a little bit, subtly for more.
And it's a good location along that 46 like that.
Yeah.
I guess unless somebody else has anything, I'd move approval of the conditional use permit for open sales area and repair shop.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, you ready? Michael?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion here. Alright. Losatell AT&amp;T conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for communications tower. Said property is legally described as Verizon Track 4, as planted in Route S10 K22, accepting therefore from the east 590.30 feet of the south 590.30 feet of Verizon Track 4 as shown on survey, located in the north half and accepting the east 590.30 feet of the north 590.30 feet in section 12, T93 north, range 57 west of 53 Yankton County, South Dakota. West highways and roads here and after referred to as Zistop, South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. The E9111 address is 398 Wildflower Road, Yankton, South Dakota. Do we have someone here to speak for this conditional use permit?
Evening commissioners, my name is Ryan Struff and I'm with Powder River Development on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility. This evening, we're requesting a conditional use permit for 195 foot monopole telecommunications tower in the northeast quarter of section 12, 9357. Based on the review of the county's code and regulations, we're meeting all zoning setbacks for this particular conditional use permit. The technology on this tower, which includes technology for AT&amp;T and also their first net technology, which is being deployed by AT&amp;T, which is a nationwide wireless network for first responders, public safety, to enable them to make better and faster decisions on the fly. With regards to the tower itself, again, it's 195 foot monopole tower. There would be a six foot wooden fence to screen the ground equipment. All FAA and FCC licenses have been approved for this particular site. The tower is not planned to be lit. The only reason why it would be lit is if federal regulations or the FAA or FCC would require the tower to be lit. This particular tower can be expanded to have five total carriers for, excuse me, for a total of five carriers on the tower. But now, I guess, I hope it up to any questions that you may have. Have been working with staff on this particular conditional use permit and they have been working with their whole site, all the view of the documents that we provided and counting.
There are no towers in the area you could co-locate on with this?
Commissioner, there are no towers within two miles that we're able to co-locate on. There are other towers within five miles that the, that AT&amp;T is currently working on to be co-located on. Porch will need to serve this particular area better. The only way is to construct a new power.
Do you happen to have a map of the area where service would be improved? If you have anything like that, or a map of, okay, we have poor service here and if we put this tower in, this is what power service has got to benefit the area?
Yeah, so we do have propagation maps that have been developed and I'll see if I have them here, just give me one second.
Because I know reception has been a problem in that area.
I think that is a new show now. Again, I'll pass this around, but just to explain it a little bit further, there's a lot of color to come to this map. This first page here shows the pre-coverage and I would say the better coverage is shown in the blue areas where there are existing towers that we're using with AT&amp;T service and first net. The next page on here will indicate the service, if you saw it. And I'll circle these on the map, if you get an idea, if you flip back and forth with these two, you can see approximately where the new service turns from green, yellow, and red to blue. I believe that your staff has copies of those.
So, now you said for a light that this tower will not be lit and must have FAA requires that to be lit, is that correct?
That's correct. Typically, towers under 200 feet do not need to be lit. This is 195 feet with a four foot lighting rod to make it a total of 199 feet. Again, under 200 feet doesn't need to be lit unless it's in some sort of a path of an airport or some other type of use by the FAA or FCC. At this time, it is not supposed to be lit, nor do the documentations that we received from the FAA require it to be lit at this time. Your answer on that though, whether it needs to be lit or not? I mean, do you know for certain? Or the documents provided by the FAA have not outlined that it needs to be lit. So, based on that, unless they change it, which, again, we've already made application, it's been proved, it will not be lit.
Alright, circle. I know we can pack it, I'm just not sure what.
There was one that made you.
Yeah.
You know a light or no light? Just speaking for myself, I don't want that in my backyard. There's a lot of people that live around out there. If you want to put that tower right in the middle of the building area, there's, there's plenty of homes out there now, more than a town. And I really don't believe you want a tower in the midst of personal development. You don't want to have to look out the front window and see that everywhere. I don't want to have to walk out my back door and see it anywhere. This kind of looks like people looking down on you.
Are your cameras being that loud?
Commissioner, I'm not aware when you say cameras down on the particular tower. Not aware we, the technology that is on is going to be dependent on radios.
Is that the highest point in the area?
Commissioner, based on the topology of, the topology of that area, I'm not seeing that. I don't believe that it's the highest point. But again, just because it's the highest point doesn't mean it's the best point to have a tower. And I'm saying that because at a certain point, when you're up higher, let's say, there's a certain demographic or area that you're looking to serve, that particular signal could be that go over top of where you want to serve.
I have a question. Where on that property goes to how that will...
Okay, if you got to wait for public input, then you will have to answer.
Okay.
Thank you, please stay.
Chairman, commissioners, just, you know, if I could just answer a quick question in terms of the location. There was, should be a set of construction drawings that were distributed to you on, on sheet C1, which is the overall site plan, shows the location of the tower, which is approximately 420 feet from the north section line and approximately 410 feet from west property line. Internal there, there's 100, 500 feet area, intersection center of that is the top location.
We've got 200 pages in there, not numbers.
So, it would be shortly after you see construction drawings that. About six cases.
You know, you label all those as exhibits, I'm telling them exhibit number.
I do not have them listed as exhibits. I'm guessing they were maybe handed to the commissioners as exhibits. Are we able to put this up on the screen?
Do you have it on like a flash drive or something, or did you bring a laptop with you? Actually, I might be able to bring it up. Yeah.
Yes. Correct, both of those. Going to be a stupid. Probably the first one.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah.
So, your 400 roughly feed off that north section line is 400 or less anyway. That's correct, correct, Commissioner?
And so, how far does that coverage area extend?
I guess we can pull up the propagation maps that it leaves staff, to just hand it those out. That is if you shed the map. Yes.
Oh, this one. So, the goal of this is to give the yellow and red areas more coverage?
That's correct, so we're showing the blue areas where it's, I mean, the most coverage, most change with regards to the propagation map. So, by having the new tower site increases the coverage in between the other existing sites that show as the blue areas.
I guess I don't see a significant difference between, you know, the 190 and the 150. I know the tow, the taller you go, the better coverage you have, but is there a reason it's, you know, 195 as opposed to another number that's lower?
Commissioner and commissioners, the reason, I guess, for the request at 190 feet is because of, I guess, the technology that AT&amp;T is deploying and first net. Because of those, with the first net technology they're looking to deploy, again, the importance of that for first responders, public safety, that is why we're requesting a location on a tower, they are requesting a location on a tower at approximately 190.
Mr. Lewis, I'm going to pop you back.
Commissioner, over the past number of years, we've had discussions with that particular landlord and that tower owner and unfortunately, they're not allowing us to pursue a co-location with them.
How many people does this increase coverage?
Commissioner, unfortunately, I don't have the number of people that it would affect, but it would it would bring additional service for people that come, kind of live here, that come to visit the county and use the recreational areas along the river. That's who it's looking to serve and provide additional data and site of a service for.
I'm not aware of the county still has the old regional towers. I know where you're talking. Cali old that or no, you know? Because that is used by radio, the two-way radio, or the county has to have their broadband radio, was on Bill Maher's property. I was trying to get to people that, something on the hotspot. I don't know what you're saying. Been a long time ago, but that tower's still in use.
Can I be ready to hear some public here?
I just have a question before we move on. Is the fall zone, you change the figure of that software? I just have a question before we move on. Is the fall zone, you can change the figure of that software?
Fall zone is, let's see here, so we have the 100 by 100 piece area. I'm not sure that there was, there was a fall zone that are produced for this particular site, but that's something that we can, if you move forward with approval, as if you put that as a condition, that would be fine. Typically, a monopole fall, you know, within the distance. And it will be within the property boundary in that crossing any section lines or roadways.
So there are no homes at all in that area?
Yes.
In that fall zone area, in 200 feet of that?
No, the closest home, Commissioner, is 754 feet from the tower site.
All right. Any other questions, something more before I ask the public?
Commissioner, isn't that a number that I've been provided with for AT&amp;T customers within AT&amp;T company?
That would be a sales question. That'd be a question for somebody that does sales.
Can you explain some of the, like, the first responders system that are what this would actually do? Or purpose of this?
Yeah, so I guess there's a lot of detail that you can look up. There's a lot of detail that we can provide, actual materials to, to the commissioners and to staff. But, you know, outside of, you know, the, the purpose of first net and that technology is providing, you know, high-speed broadband service to first responders, please fire EMTs, EFPs, and just so they can be connected together in case of any type of courtesy type situation. And be able to make quick decisions based on quick responses to one another and communicate.
What would be the other towers in the area have the first responders?
The college? Commissioner, yes, they, they will be having the first net installed. That is, you know, the site that's approximately five miles from there that we're also working on as a co-location. And that is having first net services located on the tower. So it is a nationwide system that will be deployed again nationwide for first responders.
So the other tower you want to co-locate on, is that on this map?
There, so that particular map, you're going to see where we're co-located, currently co-located, or have towers in the middle of those blue sections. You know, I, you know, the, usually our proposed co-locations, they're not going to be on a propagation map that's showing current conditions or this particular application.
All right. Did you get the seat or just minutes? We get the opportunity for the public to come forward and ask questions? All right. Time to public input. When they come up, please state your name for the record. We have a primary. If anyone wants to find the best.
You want to find both?
Yeah, I was going to.
My name's Adrian. My mom and I, yes, I'm probably the whole, but 795 people. And my house, my house will generally work at the tower. My window will.
It is the east side.
It's just.
What was your last name?
My mom. We can see the space to the tower's house. Correct me. And I've lived there 10 years. And we use her as a model something that we have developed. So I guess my question is, is red and white those currently out there, I mean, part inside carriers? That kind of thing, we don't touch the service with what we use. I've been working from home since March, using right, we're kind of the whole hot spot. I do graphic design work, so I use Heidi's bench, and I've had no problem. But I don't want this tower. And we have a minimum name is Rome. My family is family to cover the roads, and I have been, have been riding gravel and service, and maybe even inspection of this road 10 years.
This is you.
And I'm hoping that that's not a forever home, so I mean, I just can't imagine looking out my window at a tower every day. Sorry. I didn't, people want to be emotional, but this is impotential.
Hello. My name is James Thorson. I reside at U68 Wildflower Road. We're members of Cedar Ridge Property Owners Association. And which includes part of that CombiZem tract four in which the tower is supposed to be located. I, just looking at your website and the purpose of the zoning. In, in the zoning 201 zoning districts, low density rural residential district. The intent of low density rural residential district R1 is to provide for residential uses of lo, larger lots and other compatible uses in pleasant and stable environment, in a, in a pleasant and stable environment. And I think, to me, as a planning zoning commission, the number one thing is, is this really necessary? Like, Commissioner, heavily just said of plodding this tower right in the middle of a residential section. This does not follow what your county zoning guidelines are. Whether it has a light or not, those things are all, all part of it, but I would go right back to that, whether, whether we need it there or not. I would also like to, or just by reason of this hearing. The property that we're talking about is in zone for this use, and you're having this hearing to make a conditional use. And I, I would ask if maybe you provide or look for more reason than to pull this first responder thing out. And if we really need that there. I can't believe in all up and down the South Dakota side and the Nebraska side that these people cannot find a less obtrusive location or a tower that would get the same results. This has, will have, I think, Mrs. Mayo would have, has alluded to. This will have a direct effect on our property values as well as just our daily living of, of coming out each day and, and going out at night and see the stars and that's a light, although they said there's not going to be a light. But it just is a disruption of what the purpose of us all buying land out there and, and investing our time and energy and money to live out there, and this just doesn't fit. Thank you. With clarification, could you, what was your comment about the HOA, homeowners association? We, we, we have a homeowners association that, that tract four in which the land is located. A part of that tract four is a part of this homeowners association. And so there are four homeowners that live on the properties there. And in my discussion with them, they are all opposed to this tower going up, period. I do not have that in writing, but in discussion with them, that's how the, what their wishes were. So, take a couple more seconds here. Wildflower Road, which is the address of that, our first concern was that this would then be an access to this tower, which is a private road, it's a heated road, it's maintained and paid for by these homeowners. And we definitely did not want any, any part of that to have it, because, you know, having to fix roads or, or gravel on those types of things. So I don't wish it to go on to 310 because they would have the same issues that we do. And so anyway, that's what that. Okay.
Thank you. All right. I have a question about that. We brought it back. We have covenants that run with our land that was set up by the bylaws of the lawyer. So I was wondering if this property that was trying to put this on, does it have any covenants?
The covenants only apply to people that buy the land, but the, and the county does not enforce.
So, so like, so I could legally go after the owner of the land, right?
I think you do legally twice. All I can tell you is that the county does not enforce that.
Okay. But I mean, like.
It's just, it's simple.
It's just a little. Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is John Seckmeyer. I live at 321 Spirit Hills Road. So I'm to the north and west of this property, within one mile. Where this tower site's going to be. It's a beautiful piece of land, roughly 55 or 56 acres. It's not developed. All of the properties in that area are developed, two and a half to 20 or 30 acres. People have tried their homes. I'm quite glad I built a home for the views, for the open spaces, not having iceboards. This would just pop up after we lived there 10 years, and we got to deal with it. So I'm going to give you a picture. You can imagine 200-foot tower and two trees, and that's off the front of my house. This would be equal to a 20-story building. The county covenant will probably let us hit only a house, two-story houses and like 35 obstructed. Three and four-story houses up there, this well exceed. With that 199-foot tower, you have guidelines, small building, fence, road, increased traffic. These are all commercial issues that we don't want to deal with as homeowners. Plenty of sites out there. We could move it a mile north on Highway 50 up to the PDMX. Motor City Track, I can name hundreds of places, super for a commercial venture. Would dominate the skyline or not, this, the people are notified. They're only notified within a half-mile circle. You can see this for miles. So it's dozens of people that aren't here, 100 people. Impact wildlife, there are turkeys and peasants, butterfly fly off the plate, right up that, thousands of bees fly right across that property.
One minute.
So I guess in him, yeah, our roads aren't good. County has no money to fix them. But yeah, boy, when the property owner would benefit from this, no one else would. Give a negative impact, everyone in that town, except one person. That's why I do sense.
My name is Lisa Huber. My husband and I live in Sundance Ridge Development, which is just on the left side of that map right there. It's adjacent to the west and wraps around to the south of the proposed tower site. We have also developed lots for sale in this area, and we're here to voice our objections to the building of this tower. We are the landowners that share a common fence line with the property in discussion communication tower. So we are 410 feet from this tower. Most of the lots in Sundance Ridge are within view of this proposed site of the tower. The lot that shares the common fence line with the proposed site has a beautiful view of 360 degrees, including the link. It's a beautiful area. This lot and one other are currently in contract to sell, but are pending based on the outcome of the decision of this tower. The plan approval for one of these lots is in the agenda for later tonight, this evening. Needless to say, so we are not in favor of 199-foot towers in nature, either as a developer of Sundance Ridge lots nor as a resident within the area. If this proposed tower goes through, it will be a major financial hardship to me and my husband as we stand to lose these lot sales. As a resident of Sundance Ridge, I do not feel that feel that late due property is the appropriate place for a communications tower. Marocetel is from Minneapolis and the Creekers, although they own the property in discussion, living rapid. The proposed tower will not impact either one of them, but it will impact the people that are living directly underneath it.
Anyone else like to speak?
I just have a question. We are neutral and I live on 310. Would this be any type of internet service for the community out there or live out there or only mobile? Because we don't have internet service in our home.
You can answer, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, just on that particular question, again, AT&amp;T is a carrier, just like Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile. That is the, that is the technology that they have. If you're able to get their service, of course, we all know that you can use internet from, you know, mobile devices. On the mobile hotspot.
For our internet, those are where, in where we live, neither are, are reception. Yeah, or. Yeah.
Did you want?
I don't know.
I have an answer to that. We actually contacted someone to determine what's their net, to see if they were going to be able to get on that tower. And they told us that there's too many conditional uses and stuff like that, that they're not going to be able to get on that tower by, by this time.
Okay, so I, so just the question. Any other people want to speak? From the audience?
I just, I just want to like to call Snowline.
We can let us look in my search.
Thanks. So I'll just call, 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 that you hired to, to look at this application process that's not here.
Okay.
Would you ask questions, but I'm available, so I'm sitting over there. Whatever the progress time is, I can answer some of your questions.
Yeah, please. Go ahead and answer them now with the, with the.
Okay. So, my name is Rick Adams. I'm here on independent wireless consult. I've worked for different cities and I've worked for your county. Working with, on that application for your county, because I work in actually for community wireless. Because I work in actually for community wireless consult, so it's your telecom. So I've been in the business doing zoning on eighty sites for twenty-six years. I've been involved with a dozen lawsuits with different communities that I have found. Our site, so I've been there, the district special court, many criminal courts to testify over different, if people are against this. At one time, I did, nine years ago, I did a lot of work for ATT. Part of the process that the new wireless consultants set up was they didn't, when they took over for CMS, is they wanted to do a better job for the county. And they didn't want to see bad applications be brought into the county to, to avoid kind of meetings like we're having tonight. So originally, this allocation was going to go further to the R. Was going to be a four hundred foot tower, guy tower. For some reason, they worked with Pat Garrity on that. I wasn't involved, I just know visiting with Pat what transpired. And at the time, it was said that they should try to go on to the, how long county tower? They tried for many years to get that arranged for and then Pat tried to arrange for himself. They got involved, but Pat totally, he, go ahead with your new application because we can't get any response on co-location on that guy tower. I looked at that guy tower myself, in my opinion, because it was a whole, a lot of cell site equipment. You know, cell site equipment. From third generation equipment to a fourth generation equipment, changed a lot. Third generation equipment was about the weight of Harley Davidson. Fourth generation equipment, about the weight of a car. So it's a big difference in what, what all the carries and technologies. So that's part of your application process. We put in a pre-application interview with the RF engineer for ATT. They're the ones that have the answers that a lot of us seek. They're the ones that pick the site, pick the heights and try to produce those propagation maps. And then the ones responsible for bringing coverage into the area. So when they went to this, the old site was not available till anymore. So they went out and looked for a new site and they found this land ward that was willing to handle the plans. And they wanted a four hundred foot tower there. I had a hard heart with RF engineer and I said, you know, this, this is a rural residential area. Really don't want to come before this tower. With the four hundred foot guy tower proposal, why did you got? We got migratory bird concerns with the guy wires, you got light threats besides aesthetics. So as a compromise, ATT agreed to reduce the height to a hundred and ninety-nine feet, so wouldn't need light. And instead of putting up a lattice tower or guy tower, put up a monopole. So a monopole is generally more aesthetically acceptable to communities. Of course, there's a lot of monopoles in residential neighborhoods, downtown areas. So it's a common type of structure for residential community. The aesthetics of them, no one wants to look at a south tower or a monopole, whether it's a monopole or a lattice tower. You get the same problems. A monopole can make, you need to look a little bit different. Make it look like a big tree. But generally, those big trees stick out like a sore thumb. And once the raw people kind of say, well, what was the point of that? But one thing that can be done is, this is, our, your code mandates that this site be built a hole. Carrier plus four additional carriers. So it's a five ten monopole. So to make a five ten monopole practical, this height, you got to have standoff antennas. So you have little, you got what we call the gravity pro mask. They look like a pro's antenna. Suddenly, it's to go about eighteen from the tower. You got five different levels of that, the fingers growing up. As a compromise, to make the tower look better, you can have the same height tower, but you can have what we call close mounted antennas. They didn't propose it, that's an option for you to look at. They're generally better looking. I've seen the close mount monopoles. Here are those of a national park, there's one there in the door. They look pretty good better than a five, than these monopoles with, with the antenna raised on them. However, when you do that, you're taking this hole, essentially making it from a five tennis pole down to two tennis pole. Because it gets the number of antennas on it, then you have to take up more antenna slot. But they do look better with the community. So that'd be one compromise that sure ATT would agree to, knowing their RF engineering team and treating ATT in its community. But what you risk is that somewhere out there, like two other carriers, I mean, the second carrier could be a commodity there, but when the third or fourth carrier comes along, you probably have another application for another pole. So kind of a value decision, is it, is it look worse to have the tenor raised on there? Or, or is it better to have two monopoles out there with close mounted antennas? So that's a subjective. But we have, our work, what it is very good is design and structure such to co-locate, I think it does say more other carriers or whatever. But it gives you latitude to, your code gives you latitude to make other decisions based upon, right, other criteria. On the back end, if we can't force, yeah, let's say Verizon came in and asked ATT, if we co-locate on that hole, it's not the same that they have to drive. No. They better, well, they have to prove that the space is unavailable. If it's, if it's available, it's available. ATT has to rent to Verizon. And Verizon has a need out there. Verizon wants to rent from ATT. Now what happens is, you know, Verizon comes out there and says they are ATT. And only hundred twenty is available because, you know, the carriers, that's when you have another application. So if they fight hard about saying, if they can prove they can go on eighty and not on twenty, that's one percent of poles. And if you drive around countryside, you'll see multiple poles next to each other. One is, because if that's you, enough on a pole, a whole second or a third or fourth period or four desolating flats. If you know, really strict desolating regulation. They've been working on this application for years. And they've put a lot of honey on this application, that's why the Dallas sites are having a strict application like you do. It's a mutual requirement. Very hard to turn down a site, and they beat all your zoning, which is second best. That's one thing. Second thing is, with all the federal regulations, the whole federal regulations, a lot of people come up and pay for it. But to, to come up with certain criteria, to turn down a site, you got to have substantial written evidence. You know, public record to, to add to that of your decision. It's tough to doing it with very strong zoning ordinance. If we could talk about maybe it's a change in the path. So with, I was, I was involved in a lawsuit with ATT in Lake County, Minnesota, where ATT wanted to put a four hundred foot guy tower right next to the boundary water community area. You can imagine how to grow it over that. So the county had no choice but to pass it because it meant the zoning ordinance. But the friends of the boundary water took ATT federal court. And federal court has a compromise, the friends of the boundary water said, we'll give you a hundred and ninety-nine foot monopole, we won't give you a four hundred, just four hundred foot guy tower. So ATT, while they may have a choice, they had to service the area, so they put up the hundred and ninety-nine foot monopole. But they appealed that decision and then after four years, we got the four hundred guy tower next to, you know, the body water community, protected, law enforcement, or protected moments. So, you know, there's a lot of precedents. So, so, you know, when you come up and you try to formulate why you would turn down a tower, you gotta say, we're going to turn it down because the neighbors don't want to see it. That's not a reason that the FCC will accept as a reason, it's going to be more safety or violation of the ordinance or how you set up your plan. So that's not a valid reason. A valid reason might be that it would affect property values. But you're going to have, you're going to have a report, you're going to have some evidence. With the Telecom Act in nineteen ninety-six, you put the owners on the zoning board when they're turning down a site, come up with the proof. You know, if this was a dog panel, and had these objections like this, you'd ask the applicant to prove that the dogs wouldn't bark or you could ask the applicant to improve as when, when the property values, the properties. But the FCC, this is a public, more or less a public utility, a public need set that the owners on the zoning board come up with the evidence, but this is not a good site. A very tough standard to make. Roll the dice, hope you get a good judge.
Quick question. You said earlier that, okay, they build the tower. And Verizon comes and says, we want on there and they don't have, they build another tower.
Right.
Right, but they have. How come they can't do that on that northwest of power?
Well, because you're, that one, that tower was built before, before you put us in place, that's not a condition. See, they just pulled one and two. Just looking at the tower and all the ways.
No, I'm saying, there's, there's no room, so you have to build the tower out there.
That's kind of what you basically told us. That they, they didn't have room on their tower, they could build one right next to their tower. Correct. If the landlord would rent the land to them, okay, then we talk with the landlord out there. Well, then you get in some air currents problems too. Got to have separation type of services and stuff like that. So most of the time, you see these telecom towers, that they're, most of the time they're like services because try to put the thing on a, AM radio station tower, usually AM radio station would, would interfere with the cellular network. So, so one other point I wanted to make is this FirstNet system. ATT is the only company that has the FirstNet system. Federal government licensed ATT to run that program for. And how that program runs is ATT builds the site. And this is all coordinated through the state. And they pick these spots ahead of time. Come up with the RF engineering plan, this is one of the ones that are on that plan. And so with FirstNet, how it works is ATT builds the site, it's ironic, and the site has part of the started network. Silver alert or one of these, or tornado alert or one of these alerts that come out. Alert system kicks all the ATT customers off those frequencies. Federal government takes over the frequencies, what else can we learn? So this and that, just the cell site, it's the FirstNet system too. Of course, the cell site, that system will run if your ISP service over. That system I happen to have, I live in a rural area in northern Minnesota. I happen to have my, my internet service through Verizon. Because Verizon's the only one out there that has a service. So, but the other point that you got to be careful about is just because Verizon has service out there, you got a lot of, you got the carriers that have service out there too. Got to make some accommodations for that, that service. So the compromise that we came up with, that staff and I negotiated with ATT was not to put up a four hundred foot tower that would service more people, because it would be a bigger eyesore. Maybe it has its wildlife. Put up a shorter monopole that's not flipped. And that shorter monopole didn't cover the entire area, it would be covered. So in the future, it doesn't see down the lake shore, so a lot. So the future you're going to end up with, four or five small cell sites along here. You know, looking up, and that drive down there. And that seemed to, to staff and tie it on myself, of course, staff was that guarantee at the time, that that would be preferable than having a four hundred foot guy tower up on that hill, which is really unplace. But Verizon already has a bunch of small, small cell sites down there, or have five down there that service to me. And since that decision was made, the federal government came out and mandated that every government authority that has railways has to allow up to fifty foot monopoles in that railway. So cities that, that traditionally have gated communities and have blocked out any type of service to the zoning ordinance, because it's easy enough to do. You could have done it, and as you said, it's not allowed in the R one area, but that's not the legal sense. But if you did that, now these carriers could come in and put fifty foot monopoles in their railway in other people's houses. You can't turn down those applications. So the federal government is rationing, limiting every year, but you can do it so much. So your hands are a little bit tied. So I'm not going to tell you what to do. I'm going to say that these, these are the pitfalls that you got to navigate. So we talked in the past about making some of these changes. I remember specifics, but I remember running up the Internet Telecom Act in ninety-six with a lot of authority away from. That is the one that says, you got to make accommodations for this, these services in your communities. So one is you have to figure out how to accommodate them. And two, if you turn one down, you got to have some substantial evidence. And then all this is on the county or the board, the local zoning authority, produce that evidence. It's not up to the carrier to produce evidence. It's not a problem. It's up to the local zoning authority, so that's a risk problem. Now, at some point, we talked about two mile radius, there's no two sites or towers. Where did that two mile radius come from? Where did that criteria come from? From an air. Right. Because some, some communities say two miles, some communities say one mile, some say half mile. But what happens is, as a network, it's more and more loaded. We need to get loaded because it's virus now, because there's more people moving out of the cities and living in the rural areas. There's a lot of capacity problems. So a lot of, what I'm advising communities, the head ordinance like yours, you got to cut down that area to like a half mile or a mile or half mile. You still have a two mile, which is fine, you can force that, but at some point, it's like, how do you service the community? You still have a two mile, which is fine, you can force that, but at some point, it's like, how do you service the community? What's a good way to service the community? Too restrictive like you, like you are right now, of course, you folks all know, that for a seven year period, there wasn't any services running to the county, so now the county is looking behind services. So it's getting, every unit goes by, it's getting more and more imperative of these services in different areas that you haven't allowed to announce. The thing with this application is it meets all your zoning requirements. Even the restrictive one that you have, it meets all your zoning requirements. So you can't come up with new requirements. You can for the next application, work this out. This application, you gotta process, under the ordinance you have in place. So I know that's not probably what you wanna hear, but like I said, I'm independent. I study these rules and laws and the ordinance, I'm very familiar with it, I'm familiar with the application. That's my advice. If this location were to be denied, they would have to be, I mean, they could put up a fifty foot monopole without any of the objection. Yeah, but you gotta realize that this site is not just one fifty foot monopole.
Right.
This site would take the place of like thirty-six fifty foot sites. Probably even more because the fifty foot monopoles are restricted in kind of height and size and, and power. So, so it would take at least a dozen fifty foot monopoles to cover this area of this one, I think, a hundred ninety-nine foot monopole for one carrier. This is, this is a five carrier monopole. So you take five times a dozen, you have six small cell sites, essentially equal coverage of them. So, so it's not very good news, probably not one value, I'm sure you folks will hear, but it's the state of the industry, state of the federal law that's in place.
That's what I, now, I understand, they look at the engineering process to locate the site. They have the analogy of the county will create a system. And in your, I don't know if you've ever seen a cattle ever, perhaps, show you, show you, show you a large area that there's nothing. Me, if I'm looking at this, where, that is true or not.
What's more to the south, silver that block, a little bit to the southwest. And, and when they, when they showed me the four hundred foot propagation pattern, that four hundred foot site would have covered everything better, a lot better. But that's the trade-off, that's the compromise we made there. Come up with, it's gonna cost them a lot more money if they covered the neighborhood that way. And there's maybe some little valleys and that stuff that don't get coverage, I don't know. But the territory's pretty rugged out there, so I don't know if there'd be houses down there, perhaps not, but this is a compromise on aesthetics versus performance. And as you can see, people are unhappy with the hundred ninety-five, hundred ninety-nine foot monopole. You know, they think there's guy wires, and all there's no guy wires, it's a big street. And it looks a lot better than a Gladys Tower, which was small and dusty.
I understand that, I, my, the point I'm trying to give you is that they investigated other properties that are within a half mile of that. Land that was not residential built. You know, one thing is, if you go, this was Co-Flies, was a half mile of your property, I don't know if their property, you know, that's never investigated, belongs to a motorcycle truck. They spent a highway pit to, which was made the road to Gisture, which was not cemented or something, somewhere in the national area or not.
Well, you know, the construction on this really is, I have more tubes of that construction of another house out there. So what the house out there with barn or monopole, it's about the same. Traffic down here, these texts on these sites only come out of a once a quarter. So they got a lot less traffic than if they had a person brought a house on there. So I think the traffic and the road concerns are less concerning than if someone built a house there, especially if they built a barn and they had horses. Or riding horses up the road. So, but you're gonna have to deal with the application that they come up with. I mean, you're not allowed to pick the site from all, maybe better sites out there. There may be sites with higher elevation, but can't keep chasing them around. Say, well, we think there's a better site here, we think there's a better site there. They bring in a site that meets all your zoning requirements, that meets your zoning requirement, you gotta deal with that.
So what you're telling us is that if, even if we don't care to have that out there, we don't have an option.
You have an option, but I think it's gonna answer that, you're gonna have to record.
Well.
Record on that, and they're going to, I don't see how you can prevail in court.
You know, it takes the value away from our properties and, and the people that want to build out from out won't build out from out because of this tower. But do you have any concrete proof of that? Yeah, we have people who want to build a house out there, we have street people.
We've got lots that aren't gonna buy them because. But on the other side, they got, they got studies that say people want these services in there, and want internet, and they want these services. So.
So we just have to suck it up and do what you.
All I was saying, I just, I'm just letting, oh, I've seen what's happening in the industry, what the rules are. The folks, I mean, it's a trade-off, and all these things are compromises, it's a trade-off, you gotta, you gotta have some visual impact out there, get the service. But.
Can I make one comment, and then I think we can begin your public comments. Just for, for planning, don't end for the public. Just so everyone's aware, Rick Adams is hired by the county to review these, these applications, the way the ordinance was written. How many years, whenever this one was, this ordinance was adopted, it was written by a different, it was written by a different consulting company. And it was written such that the consulting company has to review all of these documents, tie it back to federal law, you know, follow our ordinance. We've switched, since switched consultants. But, and I know this is a, it's a heated issue, and it's an emotional issue, I understand that. Just wanna kind of point that out, that, that Mr. Adams is not, you know, not here to sell this to the county for eighteen T. He's basically here to interpret our ordinance, look at this process, and offer his opinion. So we can take his opinion and do what we would like with it, but that's the, that's how this ordinance is written. And that's why I'm talking to our three members, because I'm trying to answer the forums, so, sorry, so I might a little bit part of the staff report on this, so. So with that, I do, I think, maybe another comment.
Thank you.
Maybe more than one.
All right, please come up, one at a time, and the justice of the search from the public. And thank you for your patience.
My name is Kada Dunther, and we are one of the parties that are involved during trying this. So I'm here this weekend, I'm excited, this text thing, it's a little bill, I don't know how it begins. I told you what was going on, here's his response. Yeah, this is something he did, given the offer, but maybe we're a bit back out. Hey, that goes back. That's my money, Kada, right, my son, right now, it's just decided that we're gonna walk. Okay, there's a lot of emotions, we got a lot of people out there taking consideration. I don't think it's the right place to put it, there's no guarantee, I'm not hyper guaranteed, I'm not thinking like that. I sleep out by the way, I go look across, I see lights flashing. You're gonna put a house right there that might be a session. There's no guarantee, I said, if I don't have my good mind, I could make the light. That's my opinion, I think if you put a tower in another neighborhood, that's gonna present this. Racing, they're gonna have another tower, a third one. How many are they gonna have, I mean, two of them, three of them. They've got other places to be. There's other places, a lot of farms around now, I think someone in the area, okay.
Anyone else wanna come up? Koria, speak.
My work, Koria, I'll be a little bit off to see, you've been there for twenty-one years. Many is our, we don't get the view of, you, the whole area. Here, you know, all the trees and all the plants and something like that. That will totally, absolutely ruin, and we have to sit on our front deck to look out, you know, and you see this tower. And the county has made us, your own home builder, homeowners association, to pay for all of our roads, to take care of all of our roads, to grow. Why is it they're gonna be out loud, that you just come free will and write down our roads? Anybody that lives in there or builds a house pays the association fee. So we pay the taxes on it, they pay for everything. Nobody else does, county doesn't come out. They're gonna pay to take care of those. I think it's absolutely ridiculous, we have this beautiful area that we have, and they wanna destroy it with a tower. We have the tower behind us on our, they do. So why is it all that land over there is not? I can't believe the guy would not rent that out for the loan money that he's giving for one tower. Or like you said, BMX. There's no excuse that we can't get over there and get it out of housing. This is what we built up all these years. You know, if we're ready to retire and want to sell our land, our, is the county gonna reverse what we lose for value? For the people that are trying to sell properties, we're gonna lose. They're like, you can't tell me we won't lose that. It is absolutely wrong. How far are you from your home? I wouldn't even tell you. You know, that's where I look up, that's my front window, that's my front deck, that's where we sit.
That's, that's so wild, far off.
Yes. Now, when we moved out there and asked for the county to help us with our roads, because it was only five houses when we moved out, ours being the fifth. Now, if you come out there and see what is built up, all the way around us, all the different residential areas that are now built up. That you're banking tax off of us for the roads. How do you think that we should have to give up a little bit of our view, that's all we ask for, that's all we have? For reimbursement of taking care of our roads, taking care of the weeds that are along the sides of the farmer's, some of the people are not helping. And you can't tell me they're gonna come out and mow that and take a good care of that area? They know how to do it, if they come out three times a year, it's not gonna happen. I just think we need to think twice about the homeowners. We've been here, I would, I have AT&amp;T. And yes, it would be wonderful for them. But right now, to take away my view and everybody else's view around here that we paid up that money for, to get this land, and then to watch it turn around and drop in the value, is that serious of the home? Just a minute.
Does someone else that would like to speak?
Huber, I got one plan, just about the rest of this proposed property. And exciting, one of the reasons to eliminate tower review through evaluation, I mean, a lot of two lots right now are pending, in contract to sell, but they're pending based on the resolution of this tower. So I'm talking about a hundred sixty thousand dollars, which AT&amp;T is pretty little money, that we hear about that, to me, that's a big money. And for me, losing that, that would be an hardship, so I would think that would be proof that the land is devalued because of this tower. So, I'd say.
You already spoke, you already spoke once, to give you our premise, make sure everybody gets a chance to speak first.
Is there anyone in the audience that has not had a chance to speak yet?
Is there a possibility that we could have a vote of hands or show of hands how many people are against this? Is that a possibility? There's a lot of people out here in the hallway that would probably like to talk about this, but.
I'm just saying that they have tried to do this tower for eleven years long, in the spot, close your door, I suppose, or. Why isn't it still the number right to come out and do a second tower when the first tower was born again?
Excuse me, but you didn't answer Todd's question. Could we have a show of hands, or is that a possibility?
Yes, you may.
So I gotta say, is there anybody who's against?
We're various, all, one yard west of us. Oh, one for household.
I know there's a number of people that couldn't make this, they just kind of left it last week, so there's a lot of people.
That's a question I had, I think people live out there within a mile of this town. Todd, I want a number, not, not you.
Oh, probably two thousand homes.
That's just our one little section.
How many lots are there out there that are being marked per se?
There are lots of them out there. There's no one, we got lots of them. No, I mean, in our, in our little section, your section is more, our section is so.
So my next one. Yeah, I think we need to close public comment now, thank you very much for coming in, thank you for coming in, sweetie.
We'll get a five minute group.
Okay, five minute break.
I think a motion for a five minute group, sorry.
All right.
Um, bye.
If you wanna have a conversation, if you take the call, you very much appreciate that. Okay, we're gonna give our advocates a chance to answer or address any concerns. Or let's start with the Chinese, we give them a second of time, I think. Second of time for you to respond to some of the questions.
Commissioners, I guess I'll just, you know, I can read, play ten. You know, I know that your staff has reviewed and has went through this application. We made our application so that it meets the zoning regulations and setbacks. We provided the details with regards to propagation, perhaps the douchettes, the photo simulations and the construction drawings that show how we meet your regulations and your code. You know, there are, I know that Rick had addressed a couple items with regards to property values. We do not have any studies that indicate that a public communications tower being placed on property devalues property or inhibits sale of property. You can go around, you can see even locally here in the city of Genghis and see where public communication towers are in relation to homes that have been built. Homes are still selling, lots sell and thousands sell in the country. So with regards to, I know a lot of the other, there's a handful of concerns regarding the roadway. I guess there was a different understanding that we use public right of way to access, provide access to our tower site. And we do maintain our tower site. In our agreements with the landlords, we're required to maintain our site for you to, uh, weeds or other types of pests that might come into our particular lease area.
What ingress, egress from the front and using to access the site?
So we use the site, the roadway to the north of our tower site, so which is...
You want me to do that?
And I don't, I don't even believe that, that's a county road, it's a minimum payment. Yeah.
What do you mean it's that road out there, only the owner, us, you, and ourselves?
Yeah, so that I think is gonna be a big problem that needs to be sorted out. Because I, I wanna say I'll have to check with the highway superintendent, but I don't even believe that that road is on the section line. If I...
It is on the section line.
Maybe it is a section line, but the road is actually not on the section line, it's on the section line. And, and so, I, I think that could be a big, big problem. And that's something we need to clear up. So that's what your intended is, can you use three ten, as of right now, to construct the...
That's right, and so we brought our access road up to the right of way.
And the tower site.
So with that, I guess I would ask, you know, any questions? You know, again, for me, I just wanna get note that we have done thorough investigation of the, the ordinance that made our application as such.
I guess my, my question was, you know, why, why this site as opposed to another site? I, from what I've heard from public comment, I think most, everybody wants to have that and get phone. But I, from what I'm hearing, it's people would rather have a bigger tower next to Iowa 50 or next to another tower and not necessarily in a residential area. So I guess, you know, why this site as opposed to another site?
Commissioner, the R engineers are the ones that design, you know, the locations for the towers and where sites are needed. So based on the maps and information they provide to us, we go out and site act and review properties that are within the area that the R engineering team has dedicated as a location of where they need your tower site. And with that, we can, this property, and that's why we have this application. Just, just figuring a new spot on the map doesn't mean that it can create the coverage needed for this particular RL design.
Has there been an alternate site that you've identified?
That would be far more away from the residential areas.
Commissioners, we have reviewed multiple sites around this area. You know, offhand, I don't have the map of each site that we reviewed previously. But this is the one where we can move forward with the deal with the landlord and have a view within an area where our R engineering team could be the acceptable for the coverage they need.
With our county consultant mentioned, there's, there were two other options we have for using, so that would be like having a closed mounted monopole. Would you be willing to do that?
Commissioner, I think that was part of the, added as a condition of approval. We would bring that then back to AT&amp;T for review to see if their technology could attach to that.
The other option we had as a condition to use would maybe make it look like a tree. Two blocks.
Yes, and you, you can design towers for different types of trees. You know, in different, I guess, different types of...
I've seen them down, I've seen them down south, I've seen them up in the north where they...
So they, they can be shrouded in different ways to kind of get form to run, so you might like them to look like.
Could, could we request that you please check out alternate site locations? Just to try to see if there would be something within a mile radius further north that would be appropriate for your needs?
Commissioners, just to answer public comment. You know, again, we have reviewed multiple sites within the search range for this tower. So I'm guessing there are, you know, at, at this point, we're looking at the side of an application front view. Because it covers, handles the coverage need that's required by AT&amp;T.
Does it need a...
Just because, just, just moving into the mile north or two, as we've kind of discussed earlier, doesn't mean that it necessarily meets the RL objective. Probably propagation perhaps. One of this, we have other sites out there that we're trying to work, connect those all essentially together, if you're to provide coverage in that duplicate coverage in a particular area. But like here, you're trying to build a gap between this and that. Commissioner, that's correct.
Question? If we as a public have to prove that our value, our land values are gonna be reduced or there are other objections, wouldn't they have to prove that there isn't another site that's equal?
They don't have to bring an application on, they really don't have to prove anything, you're asking them if that's...
But we have, but we have to prove that values are going down. I think we probably could. We get 10 day notice, it's still tough to put in.
Okay, I'm sorry, but we have other people that are waiting for their application.
I think that...
I understand that you're concerned, I really do.
Just one real quick, the fact that you made a comment earlier. It does not look, especially considering the neighborhood and area that you gain a lot, knowing our 190 foot versus 100. So I'll put it this way, I don't...
Commissioner Ely, if I can answer that. What happens is, actually the taller monopoles technically look better than the short ones. Because the antennas on the top are eight feet tall. So when the antenna is at 150, it looks a certain size, you put that same antenna at 190, it's, looks smaller. So aesthetically, the taller towers look better, the antennas are raised, look better. And then the other thing that happens when you decrease the height, you could, you could still have it technically look like a five, you know, carrier monopole, but no one's gonna wanna rent 90 foot level or 70 foot level. So what happens is you, when you decrease the height to like, say 150, you're gonna knock two carriers, you're gonna knock it down to a three carrier monopole. Not gaining anything by making this decrease the height, unless your objective is to make it so low that they don't wanna build it.
Well, I can, I mean, I can just follow maybe the, you didn't have it up there. I, the fact that this, what's in front of me, I don't see that it's maybe lacking or...
I'm gonna make a motion. According to section 8205 and condition uses number five, it says before any conditional uses decided, planning permission shall make written to binding, or binding compliance. And I see that there is an issue with the ingress and egress to this property. So I'm gonna make a motion for a continuance until next month's meeting. I don't know if anybody has the date on that, you have that just...
Yep, September 8th.
September 8th. So I'm, I'm moving for a continuance until next month. And then I would like the ingress and egress to this property to be rectified.
Yeah, is that so you can check that road with the town county?
Yes, and, and by, by our zoning, we have to, section 8205, number five A, we have to ensure there's proper ingress, egress to that. And right now, nobody can say for sure, is that a county road, is it not a county road? You know, particular reference to automotive and pedestrian safety, convenience, traffic flow and control and access in case of a fire, I can't say that it follows that at this point. So I'll ask for...
And perhaps we could look into, um, designs and possibly making it look like a tree that will help the size a little better, make it more palatable to people.
I typically those are used in, uh, typically those are used in like a forest. This is gonna stick out in the middle of nowhere.
Well, trees can grow in the middle of nowhere.
I have some great pictures of a tree out in the middle of nowhere. I will second Dan's motion.
So my motion was for a continuance, and we have to re, kind of research the ingress, egress.
We need discussion.
I have a motion.
Well, there's a motion in the...
Further discussion. I do. If, if we are gonna have a continuance, I guess, I think it'd probably be worth it to, at least explore the closed mounted monopoles. Are you... AT&amp;T, the top one, is that right now? That's it, that's correct.
All right, we have a motion in a second. For a continuance next month's meeting.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner, if I may, and I just wanted to point out just regarding the ingress and egress. I know that there's a couple other items that you'd like us to look at, such as the, you know, the closed mounted antenna option. But I would, I would direct you to the survey that was conducted on the site. And again, signed, stamped survey that indicates 310th Street, 68 foot wide public right of way. So based on that survey and his research that he's done, has provided us access to a public right of way. So I just wanted to make sure that that is the reason why we have our access shown or to go to that public right of way.
I feel we need to check that out with our own research.
Hey, we have a motion in a second, we'll probably be ready. So, yes. Eli?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Heavely? Clemmich?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda, Hirschman, to link LLC to show use permit. Applicants requesting a commercial use permit for a training tower. Said property is niggling, strived at South Hat, Southwest Corner, including lots one and three and lot eight. And that's south 851.25 feet of the east, 450 feet of section 33. Tracked nine four north range 56 west. Tracked nine four north range fifty six west. Including track A and lot two in lot A, as per flat reported in book S eighteen H four and further excluding Lucas first edition as per flat recorded in book S ten, year fifty and further excluding Lucas third edition, Lucas fourth edition, and Lucas fifth edition as per flat recorded in book S thirteen, page forty five, and further excluding lot H one as per flat recorded in book S nine, page fifty, excuse me, page sixty four. Ancient County, South Dakota, here and after inverted as North Township, County of Gankton, State of South Dakota. The key nine one one address is four four zero zero, West thirty first street, Gankton, South Dakota. And if you think in the state.
Hi, I'm Eric Taylor with Hirschen Engineering. So we are requesting a hundred fifty foot training tower. Hopefully, that's as much as we have last time. I do appreciate your counting maps on online now. It's much easier to look at our plot and where ours is going, so we didn't have to go through that long legal description. So basically, what is happening is we do have a six foot training tower on our facility, but we're looking for a hundred foot training tower, partially because of the industry, what's changing, what is going on with tower voting and everything else, and that we have a sister company who needs more towers. So that's over tower installation services and that, and we need to be able to train these guys on different types of towers, but also make sure that as we grow and have more employees that are in-house trained or has the ability to train them properly, because people say they can go up, you know, thirty, fifty feet. But the hundred feet, hundred fifty feet makes it a little bit more interesting, a little more difficult for them. Our guys do go up to four hundred fifty feet, about five hundred is about what we max out. You don't want to go too much higher than that. And honestly, for me, if the towers are above my feet, they're way too high. So twenty feet is good enough for me. But the key thing too is, you know, being able to know what's the latest technologies coming on, being able to do training for that, but also do primary rescue training, because we're out in our industry, we are a very safe industry, that we try to be as much as possible, we wanna train all safely. So that also requires us to have the capability and the ability to train our people properly and make sure that they're certified in training, which we do. And our guys go through a lot of training every year, but this is another tool that we can use to help them with that training that we need to get for them on and ask to keep, have our employees, continue their training, also to go along with it.
So are these your installers that you guys seal them on site?
Yes. And it's. So you should have somewhat of a packet from us, a little bit of some of the different things that we're incorporating, some exemptions on. So one of the exemptions is that according to the, some ordinance, you want the the closest property might be the height of the tower plus ten percent, be hundred sixty five feet. Resting, uh, that'd be closer to a hundred feet. Either you're gonna do a home company, the commercial, you're on a commercial land, under probably going to the agricultural, which is on the other side, but that's also the same property order. The other one exemption that we're looking at is also, we do have a, also later time by our engineer that states that it will fall within an extra radius, so we would leave it at a hundred.
How close is that home to your home zone?
How close that home? My guess would be. Our building would be the closest I want to my home. So there's nothing.
But no one lives there.
No, aware of that. Hundred fifty foot support, that's what we put.
Your first request for the lot line, I said, I read through here, but your, your request, the exemption.
So currently, we're like, but our, our ordinance states that our tower not be within, has to be.
Power height plus ten.
Power tower, just right, plus be hundred sixty five feet. So then our lot line of what we put would be a hundred. That's why rest of that exception. And that, the other part of that exception is that Hirschen Holding's Act, or Zona Land, and also commercial.
I just, I missed the hundred foot.
That's, yeah. We took out your map that you guys said where that property line is between the agricultural and commercial. And the two other exemptions that we were asking for was similar to what you server had, this is gonna be a training tower. So we would like to go, let's have to go through the Hirschen Services County. That company has, we're all structural engineers, we've been thirty seven years, so we've been in the street a lot longer. Professional engineers, we have, our engineers have about a hundred twenty years of tower experience in San Antonio. All over the United States and some internationally. San Antonio for quite some time. We've all, you know, that property since last meeting. And then last one is balloon test that the county has, you're supposed to have a balloon for four hours. So I jump back with that. When the wind isn't blowing, it's kind of a good look. Interesting requirement to be talking for.
What is the? Talked about it before, but what is the rule on lighting for the tower?
So the rule on lighting, well, first it all becomes dependent on the FAA. If you're in a, in five miles of an airport, you have a higher potential to be having to be lit. So for like us, same business, church in our neighborhood, self porter was about thirty thousand hours, it doesn't have to be lit. You do have to light over two hundred feet, or sometimes if you do have to paint towers. But then it's obviously the FAA, that determination, so you do get a determination, like your company, okay. So as you, if you have to light it, depending on where your location, if you're at all, and also on your tower, I can determine what that has to be. There are rules, regulations, and very thick manual that tells you.
I was, I questioned it because I live in, right, I have a runway off of your port.
Yes.
And there's a lot of airplanes that fly all the time. Things like that sort of mark, especially if you're two miles from the airport, so, or three miles from the airport.
Yeah, if they're considered in a, in a wide slope, and that's where the FAA will make that determination if it needs to be lit or if it needs to be lit and painted, if you had a tower. But we had to ship out to Washington, so happens that if you lit it and it became a, which is a different thing because rise at the time at the FAA determination letter, that's what they use if you were traditionally the carrier full go out or whoever owns the towers, verify, and that's what they need to do. But the rule of thumb for most part of the industry is, I'm not gonna put it below, and the tower works, will follow that as much as possible, to make sure that. One more additional thing I have to worry about. Whereas to me, this is such, but just.
The recent star be right after it was over, under cloud, I don't really have the test.
So you're asking part of that. So when we give the towers to decide in our industry, when we say like nine, some quarter, correct, you're gonna want ninety mile hour? Ninety mile hour, is actually made here that thirty three feet above grid. So then actually in our program, the wind is going, a lot of that is too tall. So there's a lot of this taking into effect, so we want to save practice or put it. Again, this is where we go so far of our. Actually, thirty seven years.
So where's your, where's this training tower going?
It's gonna go just less than what we thought. Where the blue boxes are.
And the same person who owns it, so we start. Is this training towers just gonna be for their use, or do we have other people that use it?
It's mainly FBR, it is.
I'm prepared for the other questions.
Any questions for me to discuss? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this permit? Hearing that, any additional discussion or motion?
I know where we're looking at, here in, really, about the application fee, you know, if there's a small, you know, local business, we want to get so as much as we can. But I think, you know, bigger towers, you know, that would just have.
The engineering, not the application.
What was that? Section, section. So any more? I think, I think that's, I think that's what you guys, Amanda.
So you're asking for the application for?
Not that.
The five thousand.
Oh.
Others, yeah.
Cause the application fee.
I'm hungry about that.
That's for the.
That's the C P.
Yeah, right. That's why I was, when you said application fee, I meant, we're gonna.
County was more active. That's correct, yes, sir.
You know, the falls own being right next to the other property owners, I guess I don't see any issue with that, you know.
They only Jason.
Yeah.
No, it can still be within our commercial man.
It's hard to. You may want, um, you may want section point five nineteen of performance security, seventy five thousand dollars bond.
Yeah, let's, let's do the application. That's basically what I've been told is if a big tower would get built in, it'd go bankrupt, one one eight two ten. I don't think that's a issue.
I'm a little approval of the C P. Requested exemptions in addition to exemption in section point five nineteen of quality security.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. We'll talk about it. Be ready.
Ely?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Heavely?
Yes.
Clemmich?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, appreciate it very much.
Thanks for your patience. James Larson, conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a swimming pool. Said property is legally described as lot seven of parcel one in lot eight of parcel one. All in Cory Pines Edition, as per flat recorded in book S twenty, page seventy nine, section sixteen, ninety, north range fifty six west, County of South Dakota. Here and after inverted as Newtah, South Township, County of Gankton, State of South Dakota. The key nine one one address is one oh one Cory Pines Lane, Gankton, South Dakota.
Well, I'm James Larson, my wife Penny, we're just looking to hear that's the.
And you guys are located in the.
Yes, sir.
There's no. Well, usually, plan unit developments have, it's their own rules. We have any of those?
Yeah.
Put your back.
The only rule they have in there is no bug.
Are you guys planning on putting in?
We're hoping not to, but we are putting state of the art cover, that's automatic, but we do have, only have. So that'll be covered today, then we can run pool. Everybody just rimmed it, hang out on top of it, or gave it, so. Well, it's a, it's a safety measure as much for our kids. I mean, we're, we're the only ones that have children that are developing. Take your mother, and there were a couple, she was my high school kid, but otherwise, it's mostly older folks. We're open on that stretch of view, there's no reason for that.
Well, that sounds, you know, that's, we're gonna, you know, try to do something to offset the safety. And that's, that's, I think, the biggest concern is safety, ensuring all the kids and stuff like that, with the job. I know, people lose that, right?
See, you've got a row of trees in there, or trunks, is that like a buffer between the regulators?
Um, which side are we putting them on this? Uh, no, we actually have all the way down the.
Oh.
So it's, it's actually a retaining wall, so there's no, so that was the, we did need to put a fence in, we were hoping to put outside. Cause there's no access, you can get the door from the back. And our, the mass amount of shrubs, retain wall, you can see, so the other side of that is the key. I guess, kind of cover our bosom speaker. We don't have like a deck or anything on that side that I'm worried about.
One of the letters I got that say that there could be noise issues.
I don't.
I guess I don't know what that quite means, but how close is your closest?
Uh, the, the closest will be to the south, it's about fifty feet back home. Uh, an entertaining space and outdoor space for them. You might guess. And then the closest paper on the other side is probably four hundred and fifty-five or whatever. If you see where that driveway running down, that's a hundred and sixty, fifty foot of driveway. Then you got to cross the driveway to development, so it's quite a way. And I do that for me with somebody who's been discussing this yesterday. And I said, I guess I won't really see. Can't have any. People are already marketing their. Kids have a horrible tendency to go back and sound like it's. Get rid of that. You actually hear it from the back. It's crazy. All you hear is, I mean, there's only more than two coming out there. It's maybe what they're putting in a sound system that we're trying to be good, maybe present something that's completely surrounding the pool. So it's not like coming back from a house blasting out three miles and people will leave that company. We're trying to do everything to minimize that, but unfortunately if it's going to last for at least another ten years. Probably be loud as hell. If you really try. I, I actually, we had about forty-five people on our deck on Saturday night and asked. You didn't hear that, you didn't hear that. That was a doll party. Oh, you heard it.
Any more questions? Um, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the family audience that would like to speak on this CP permit? Alright, hearing none. Time for a motion or for a discussion for you.
I move to give the condition of these grant for a exhortant.
For safety. And surrounding shrubs and retaining walls.
I'll, I'll second Paul's motion.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second, we'll follow when you're ready. Arms?
Yes.
Heavely?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
Schultz? Yes. Hailey?
Yes.
Can you motion for it? Okay. Mercy Investments Company, LLC, Randy Golden, Plan Unit Development Amendment. Applicant is requesting to amend their Plan Unit Development Plan. Said property is legally described as lot H. B P one in the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter in section fifteen. E ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of fifty young, Dayton County, South Dakota. Here and now to refer to as Unife South Township, County of Dayton, state of South Dakota. The E nine-one-one address is seven zero five two millimeter dry, Dayton, South Dakota. Alright, state your name, your address.
Randy Golden, President of Mercy Investments.
Okay, um, you don't have a lot for us to look at here. Uh, we don't have a number of units, size of units, we don't have the septic system planning.
There's a hundred and thirty units, that's right. Yeah, there's twenty-seven units above the top that we use for daily. There's a hundred and two units that are around the water and into the other area.
So are you looking for a campground?
Yeah. Campground, yes, RV park, campground. And storage, we're adding onto the building. Out in the parking lot and onto the side of the main building to create storage facility. We have a pool on the side next to where the front office is now, turning to clubhouse. We have a storm shelter that's going to be designed in there as well as our water treatment facility. Um, we have RV staging, so when you're coming up a terminal and there you can pull in up to three. Complete buses and tell your vehicles to stage in, wait until you get into the front. The, the lots are, I mean, we're from not big daily, but all the seasonals. They're from five thousand square feet to over six thousand square feet per lot. These are very spacious, they're not jammed in there. We could have legally put over a hundred and ninety-five units, this whole property. This is spread out over essentially a thirty-sixth acre area. Um, there's natural, there's natural burning along the highway. Then we're utilizing for sound barrier and to keep a lot of the units from being seen as you go by. So we have our own natural fencing, if you may say. And since we're already at PUD, we're already in, in with all the setbacks that's currently positioned for. What we're going to be doing along the area as well as the lighting. You already have the ordinance in place for that, but you're fighting by for our PUD.
For the downtown side of the.
Yes. So we have our own wells on the facility, it will be cleaning up our own water and UV lighting. So we're not tapping up with the white water. The septic system will be down there just a little bit south of the, it's going to be a mound system. Where we chose not to go with fifteen hundred gallon septic tanks with the fields like all the other RV parks are doing. Which, you know, they're typically you're passing ten, ten lots per fifteen hundred. Or we're utilizing a mound system that essentially takes and collects it with our lift stations, our small lift stations. And then we're pushing it into a central septic unit that separates it and then it doses. The mound system that's out in this essentially about a two acre area that's right south of the parking lot. So you know how a mound system works, it takes, essentially it's a flowing system, so when it comes up, it then pushes it. Into this raised area that you've prepared for volume, so if, in the future, if you've ever got any issues with. The fields instead of the septic tanks, everything, you're, you're not working around lots. You're, you're actually taking care of that in the open. See if there's any issues with the septic field versus. Wondering if they're back in the grass.
So you're having open sewage and leak area?
No, no, mound system. You're not for layer with mound system.
Is a collection pond for the runoff, the gray water from the septic system?
No, ma'am. The, a mound system is essentially a large septic field. It provides, yeah, it's a, it's a large septic field that is very conducive for this particular project because there is a lot of sand. Your sand is, is the best filter before it goes to groundwater, where they can roll it. But you're, you're taking your clay and all your conditions of everything on the top side and then it's coming down through. So, um, it's, it's a modified for commercial applications. It's a modified way to do a field versus the traditional fields that you, that you pass through. For, for residential and for smaller fifteen hundred gallon septic.
Does he, does he regulate that, you know, as you have to do, like, go through them that way? So, okay, that'll be the whole, all to the understanding.
Correct. As well as every other stand will commit, our wells may be mentioned.
What's the separation between the green field and the water?
The well's sixty-eight feet and we have like, it's two hundred and fifty feet to the start of the unit. And that passed back when the PUD was, was done back in two thousand and nine, that was the standards. Cause in that same area where the existing field is for that particular building.
Is the board to be fenced around?
Yeah, we would actually do a, a cover as well as fencing around that. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's part of the whole aesthetics when you, when you're going to a nice campground. You pretty much need to have that, as we talk about when it's windy, we can't go boating for the day. Perhaps the pool action for people that want to be there.
How big is that?
How big is what? The pool. Um, it's probably going to be somewhere in that twenty by forty area. I mean, you have to have a nice enough size, but not go straight and crazy.
So what are the sizes of the tiny home profiles that you're going to put into them?
Well, so, so let's have clarification on that tiny home. A tiny home is, first of all, everything that's going to be out here is going to be licensed vehicle, so. A tiny home is three hundred and ninety-nine square feet, what it already, it's classified, it's going to have wheels, so it's movable. If you've ever watched any of these shows, I mean, sometimes it's like a trade venture that people make some really gorgeous vehicles or tiny homes that they can pull around. This, this also, we're just trying to do a separation, so this could even turn into where, this is where all the, the large buses along this section go. Just wanted to make it stand out a little bit from, from like a traditional pole beam camper or physical camper. That section was a little bit different because it's more into the public light of when you're coming down the hill, you're going to see more of that back shot than you are. When you're driving on the highway and see, I mean, that lower section where the eleven, thirteen and twenty-three, sorry, that's, that's a designated pit for where we had. Designed for the greenhouse for the original public, the PUD. So this was designed for holding a ten acre glass greenhouse. You know, back in, uh, back in, I think it was twenty thirteen, you guys, or twenty fourteen, we had the highway fifty-two vision. Board was put together, they'd put together the whole area out there where they talked about what would ideally suit you. For different parcels and different areas. I brought that map just to highlight, to show you what they actually came up with. That is the property right there and it's exactly a campground. This is what they decided and board of all the people that put that together. So it fits right in, I guess, what their vision was at that time.
So your original kind was aquaculture then, was it not?
Well, it was actually a ten acre glass greenhouse, so we're going to do floating lettuce. That's why we came down to the sand zone, cause we put liners into the sand zone. And then you can actually have your fertilizer water and you'd be floating your lettuce, but it was an option if you wanted to do aquaculture. Everybody at one time thought it was going to be fish farm, but that wasn't the basis for it. So when discovered a glass layer, made the right decision to sell it. They would have found public safety issue for east and west coming down the highway, so did the right move. So we're trying to, we're trying to turn the weed into a beautiful flower, kind of like that, so.
So do you have two points of ingress and egress or is it just the one on the barn left inside?
There is a ingress as you're coming out through the main entrance in the middle of the map through the parking lot, it starts as concrete, that's a double entrance there. The upper daily has a main entrance where you see RV staging. And then there's an emergency ingress, egress up there for that daily, that's also the first entrance in, more exit. And then on the very south portion of this property, there's the one way in that actually goes around the lake and then comes back out. We chose to get rid of the, we have legal access over here on the highway, we have fifty-two to come in on the west side of the property. We decided to move that over a little bit and create a definitive ditch system that still has the same exact water drains. To collect all the water from our neighbors area as well as all the property to the west. It comes down, we have the permanent drains that flows through that whole area. So we're taking all the water from the west into that.
Jessica, can I, Mr. Do you have a copy of the original?
I got them there.
So are you tuning this as a new PUD then or are there things not?
I'm just looking at as amended, I believe that the first one I have retail where I'm asking. Actually at the daily's. But and then the, the, you know, greenhouse area was considered one of the parts.
Dennis and Christie, you guys probably have more experience with PUDs than us, you know, from what I understand. We don't do PUDs all the time, but if you're going to do different rules in a PUD, they need to be spelled out now in the master plan. For example, you're going to have lots that are smaller, maybe with required in different areas. It happens to be spelled out now, otherwise it falls under, you know, account, regular accounting zone. If you can do that in PUD, it just needs to be done ahead of time and not, you know, after it's approved. Different rules and different shit. Is that accurate, the switching? I see that's, that's the way it all, so, yeah.
Yeah, we gotta know the numbers too for you. And this is a substantial change from the original PUD, that's why I asked you if this was going to be a campground or what was, because you could indicate that in your, in your letter that you sent out. So the people didn't really have any idea what was coming that way, do you understand what I mean? In the notice.
Uh, I just sent out what the planning of something gave me to send out. Had I known that, I would have, would have sent that out.
So, I mean, we're modifying the CPV, but. And I think that.
Yeah, I think so. I think this will definitely, you know, be a successful venture. Coster always full up. Cost are always full up there. Should have plenty of business. Kind of need a little bit more details in in the site plan and the size of the lots.
Well, if you put your tiers on against. We're going to drive a four by two by one thirty five and round.
And I probably have the back ones around the tiny home, the tiny home is eighty three by ninety seven second, two hundred square feet.
I just see the numbers.
Very spacious.
There, the only thing probably that isn't it the corner one that's open to follow. Part of the, I would, I would say that whatever, I'll want here.
Yeah.
I'm just making a suggestion that I said it's noticed that you mentioned that just so that people.
Well, it's not, it's not really the ground though, it's like, I think it is a.
Our good part.
Well, it's it's a planned unit development. It's just, it's a, it can be planned even though, you know, what you say it's going to be as long as you set the goals every time. So I think you know, really, maybe it already is. For what he's doing, I think that's the best for, you know, it's there. Yeah, and and when they do this tiny house two years ago, they did that on the C P U D.
Are you wanting to leave that optional for that? Part of my whole is, you know, kind of like, like you said, a tiny home technically is not, is not.
Well, if you're going to give me the options to put that in there, I'd love to have it.
If that's, that that would be the tie. That's what is all I get.
From what I've heard from the surrounding areas, what we're trying to do is avoid year round residents in campers per se in in that area. And the last campground we did, we did that as a stipulation. Just can't have year round of residents in, you know, a camper. That would probably be different than the tiny home. It's an actual tiny home not on wheels.
What other, what exception will we look at for watch?
Yeah. Yeah.
I might interfere more, but I don't know.
May I have any questions, Chris?
You know, you say you're using berm is your main thing.
Yes.
Is that, I'm looking here, is that plants you have along there a little?
Yes, or trees.
Okay, that's what I'm.
Right, I'm having fifty two.
Right, yeah. The last person you can you make sure the app looks, uh, pretty.
We'll do that, yeah. Okay, the project is a opportunity zone. This this project must be buttoned up by December thirty first of next year period. So what you see needs to be done to take advantage of the full entire tax program that we have in place on this. So that's kind of your stipulation right there. If you want it, you better even get it. So that's what the run of the race is.
Any other questions? Thank you. It's time for public input. If someone would like to comment on this proposal. Yes.
I'm Christopher Paul. I own the land directly adjacent to Randy's land and to the west. I guess I have spoken for Andy, just found the plans of Randy and everything. Like I mentioned earlier, one of the things he's planning on putting in is basically like ditch. It's quick, natural drainage of my fields and things from the west. Run it down, there is property, I basically take care of it. I go through there and, you know, the plan sounds good to me. I always got it looked out and I guess I just wanted to have it noted in the PUD. Basically, just for future events, if ownership ever changed or anything like that, that would maintain. We were in here about a year ago over drainage issues with this and since then it's been resolved. And I guess at the time, the consensus of this commission and the county commissions, they can't block up the natural drainage. And that's very, very important. So I guess I just wanted that to be noted in there and other than that. This plan looks good and that it should address all my concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this permit? Okay, very enough. Time for public input is now closed. We have a motion from the board.
You know, just I think with this, on the PUD, how I said before, you know, after the rules in place going forward. And again, you get a fine week. I think it'll be a success.
Sarah. The reason to glass. Certain fiction is so. It's a requirement. So that it shows up. I would support that. Because we're talking about, you know, we're in a very unstable area as far as Sam. Something.
You know, and and on something like this, I I don't think a requirement of a brown water monitoring system is a bad idea. I think, you know, there's, I think it's twenty four hundred dollars and a hundred to two hundred dollars a year to test it. I think that's cheap insurance, especially since it's well water and there is a.
Are they in the area? Pardon, are they already in the area?
Brown water monitor? Not that I'm aware of. And and a lot of those throughout the state that then goes down to funding. And I guess my point is that if you're getting, you know, well water from that area, it's probably not the worst that we have. That's once you, I'm sure that's going to be done anyway, but. You know, it's a pretty difficult one for insurance.
The request today was rather than the modified PUD was to just go back and do zones like site commercial. This would simply be a C P U D for a campground.
Pointing, I mean, there's more to it that looks like in a campground, there's a pool, there's batting on to. Crack me come around and you get a pool, you're going to add a clubhouse and storage. Sewer treatment plant. So there's a lot of things going on.
The office assembly itself has never been. And that's what I'm getting, I guess, most of this is existing building. Who would be going in? The reason I ask that or bring it up is not saying maybe groundwater is a good idea, but. It's essentially an RV park. We've got a lot of them along here. We just approved a lot. Not asking anybody to do so.
I don't think that's the one. That's the big difference. For you.
Oh, wouldn't we have our water treatment facility? You're bringing in your own man. Your trees and your water.
Yes, you're basically, you're doing it anyway. So we're thinking, you know, if you sell this in a couple of years or maybe hang on to it, if we have that as a condition and the person after you is going to have to follow it, which you're going to do anyway. But, you know, this next person, you know, we don't know. So I think it makes sense.
Can I put that in the form of a motion?
I guess I don't know if we're still discussing.
Do you have any more?
I think McConnell brought up a good point to have entries within two years. It sounds like trying to do that.
It's going to do that, you know, maybe the same thing if the other guy cross the road.
Yes, and we need to be treating everybody the same.
Yeah. If your permit works, it should fit. I buy it out.
Right.
But the three thing, that's kind of special.
Anything else?
You had really went with those, you know, the trees and monitoring the water and and whether it could be stopped on year round residence. And I want to address that. I think you got any issues with those that don't work for it now.
Just explain the water monitoring device that you're talking about.
Sure, sure. There are groundwater monitoring wells, it's a well that goes into the groundwater. It's tested, we can, we can do whatever, but once a year, we need to test for, deep in our standards is fecal caliform nitrates, nitrites, alkanes, things like that, just to make sure that the water's not contaminated.
So does it spell it out where on the property?
Well, I think it should be, I think it should be probably next to your sewer treatment plant. Or would we just, or would we just have the well water tested?
Call it a well.
You think you think that would be the?
Do it early, you might want to do that anyway, just for simple fact, you know.
That's that's why the swing is bringing into the water treatment.
Right.
That's automatic because the water comes into the monitoring system and automatically notices. Clean up whether it's fresh universe or something like iron or sulfur.
It's already kind of. He's on, he's on about that thing, just for the simple fact that if you're using well water, supply water, drinking water, every year you're required by the state to get water as fast as. Right. So and already what I want to check though is yourself. Whoever comes in that, we want them to check.
He told.
He shot. Well, they wouldn't have water supply. Well, I did it breaks down on the hook, you decide not to fix it, help you a lot.
It's it's a good idea, just like like Dennis said, it's going to, I haven't do it anyway. I don't see any fun just having that in there. So if it gets old and somebody needs that, that's a condition that they have. Last thing we want to do is have, you know.
How about for testing the well water?
I think that sounds, that sounds, testing their water once a year.
And personally, if we ever did go to the water, just in case we decided to. Not have to test the well water. Because you really have the water.
About we just test the, you know, well water once a year if it goes to be well water. For as a primary source testing.
Everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, you might not have to, you don't know. I'm trying to make a motion out of this. I'm going to make a motion to approve the plan unit development with the following conditions. No year round camper residents. Trees on the north side of the property along highway fifty two will be planted within two years. And testing the well water will be done once per year. If the primary source goes to be well water, testing will no longer be required.
Western period will be maintained by the property. By the PUD government.
And the drainage to the west of the property will be maintained by the.
The manatean or river drainage.
I'll give you grand.
Yes.
All right, that's my motion. Did you get that? This is.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll sign it. Yeah.
So we'll call voting ready. Have a look.
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Yes.
Ely?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
No, that was a good thing I didn't like that.
I didn't get both, but I'll say it anyway.
Well, thank you guys for working it out and I appreciate your investing in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow. Replant?
Please, Gary.
Yes, all right.
We did the.
We just did, we did a variance on, these are all separate. Oh, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. A replant of track two of block three, Missouri view addition in the north half of the northeast order, section fifteen, township ninety three north, range fifty six west of PM in East County South Dakota.
People cool them all.
I guess.
All right. We'll call a vote.
I just.
Jessica, please. All right. All votes in favor? In your phones? There are none, motion passes. Yeah, that's the one that they were talking about. Okay, plant of lot fifteen on Sunbands Ridge located in the west half of section twelve, two ninety three north, range fifty seven west of PM, Ankenson County, South Dakota.
Vote bro.
I'll second.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So I'm Todd Heber. I'm the owner of this property and this is one of the properties that we were talking about that if that's power approved, that sale probably won't work. So I'm wondering, can I unplug that? You know, that power is approved.
I know, through the last, you have to look back to the process again. You have to. You have to physically combine the two properties back together. We've done that before.
Maybe you want to postpone the approval and shut it next month.
It's been built through or they open break down this somewhere.
It needs to go through for the, the sale is listed to close.
Right.
However, I mean, this tower could mess it up.
So right now it's agglom. Right, and so I platted. Falls through that's a tower. Then. Right. So that's what we're like, I'm applying. I think I might go ahead and apply it right now. But, and that's my question.
We'll just have to pay, have it replanted back together. Was it? Question? I believe there's a flat vacation. You vacate a flat?
Right.
I don't, I don't know the whole process right now, but I believe that it's an option. So they want to have to replant and just vacate this flat. I can find out the details. To this.
That improved that ceiling. That improved.
Listen to the guy that has to be written, not def�ed. And already got that out. All the facts, all the numbers. I think what he alluded to was that.
So this is one lot. Can, can I forget it? And just some, that's another one. I'm applying this one. But again, I don't think it was.
Well, what I'm hearing is they want to do the C.
They want C that it's. Probably not sold.
Well, I think whatever they're. They're alluding to is this would likely end up in federal court and it would be a. What a federal judge would be. I could weigh in on my thoughts, but it.
I mean, we really think you keep left.
That's good.
And this is really the plan. And you know what the continuance that we had is, we have a lot to, you know, research and look into some more. And then we'll have that Q and next month. And then it'll have to wait at least ten days. It'll be really about two weeks before it goes to board adjustment or the final decision is made soon. So sometime. The final decision.
That would include like proving the rest of the property. Lost the sale.
You had, you had to look that up. You can't tell you.
Sorry.
Thanks. So we have a motion to approve the flat. And second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take a motion here.
If you're vacating that lot, is that something that should have been put into record or is that just a standard?
No, that's just.
That's just a standard.
All right. Flat of lot eighteen, white tail run in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter, section sixteen, two ninety-three north. Range fifty-six west of the fifty M, Yankee County, South Dakota. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion here. Okay. Box addition. Is this one maybe? Yeah. Yeah, but we had so much sense. Baki addition of north. Flat of Baki addition in the northwest quarter of section one, two ninety-three north, range seventy-seven west of the scan, you can probably south of it. Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second. All right, that was my call. Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion here.
We save, I've been saving, I keep saving all this stuff.
I do, if they file.
Yes, you can save mine too.
So you're telling me I need to save all this?
I have people call me and ask me.
All you're the official now, but he's going to ask me, call me and says there's a five, but you know what, I'll overplay it.
That's how public.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we're done.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I went for all this class. Yeah.
Now Paul, I really can't tell you that I'm fine.